Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. That's September 17th for the California Guard. Mr. Wilson, please.
Will you please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Randalls?
Present.
Councilmember Raymond?
Here.
Oh.
Randalls would move to add this to the agenda.
I have a second.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the add-on item.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Yes, um...
Let me, Ray, before we start, anybody that has a card, if you want questions answered, this is going to use your time. So I would advise anybody, if you want a question that's going to take some answering, to maybe present a question and one of the staff members will be more than happy to hear it at your convenience rather than using your time because we're running into a problem with people using up their time and then they want more time and it's not the way it happens. So if you ask the question and you want it answered, you're going to use your time. I'll just tell everybody that now.
Okay, Mr...
I can't make it any different.
I understand. I'm going to be very, very mindful of your time. I know you have a busy agenda. And I'm speaking on my behalf as a resident of the city of Cape Canaveral and not as a candidate. And I did want to mention, you know, the improvements in the city's been great lately. You know, the short period I've here, I've been here, I've seen a lot of really great improvements, including the vulnerability study, which showed us a little bit about what's going on with storm surge in our city and flooding. And those are those great studies, very timely to do that. Hats off, you've got some really great brochures here on how to save our lagoon. Those are incredible. And I was doing the water, looking at water quality and as you know, I did want to congratulate the city on its focus towards sustainability. And I think we can continue with that. And I've heard that the city's also interested in solar-ready buildings, you know, in cooperating clean energy with its different buildings and with perhaps even the residents, which we can talk about later. And I've had some very good conversations with members of the city council regarding historic preservation, very promising. Maybe one day we might see that on the agenda with historic preservation of different properties, historic resources that we have in the community. As an area of improvement, and that's all I want to do, this is not a criticism, is that regarding the storm preparations, I kind of, it might be my bad or something like that, but I think a lot of residents are stuck in the situation too. And that's the situation with sandbags. And I visited the city website and understand the city will not be providing sandbags, nor can we actually go on the beach to get sand. And so I did some research and you guys on your website did provide some good sources to find sandbag materials, like from Amazon and from Home Depot. Although the question is out now, where do we get the sand from? So I was thinking maybe we could address that situation. I know other residents would be interested in that too because if we have storm surge, it's going to be very important in flooding to have sandbags in front of our doors to prevent any flooding. I think it was by the grace of God that we did not have a more severe storm and I'm grateful and thankful for that, that we didn't have a bad storm. But if we do, it would be nice to prepare ourselves with sandbags. So I just want to bring that, maybe that could be talked about at a certain level. But anyway, thank you. Thanks for the great job you're all doing.
Okay. I have some other cards and they're on consent items. We're going to let you talk on those before we get into the consent agenda. I'll make sure I got it right. Next. Okay, Ms. Wuzenka, you were not going to speak unless...
I need to. Unless I, unless I have those questions or I need to speak.
Right, that's what I'm asking, you're not going to... And Mr. Gall?
Yes, sir.
Same thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you just have the case, okay. All right, we'll get into the other items. We got item number two, I have one, two, three cards on that, no... Catherine Sadeil. Sadeil, would be...
Yeah, I'm Catherine Sadeil. I live at 135 Oak Lane with my husband, Mark James. Excuse me. We are relatively pleased that the city has finally addressed the issues of Oak Lane, including the consent agenda item, the right-of-way. We have seen the maps and while the maps have for several years now disagreed, this one looks like it might be okay. So we're pleased with that. We're also pleased with the item on the next page, the public hearing, item number 10, which is the ordinance to change the front boundary lines of the properties.
That we'll have to discuss when that item comes up.
Okay, but I still have a little bit of time, so with my little bit of time, I'll say, in general, we're pleased with the solutions that the city has sought to offer to the dilemmas that we've been having and we appreciate the efforts of everyone concerned.
Thank you. Glad it's there, believe it. Okay. The other one is Ray Osborne. You have a item on, is that intended for the item on the agenda as a, or in the consent agenda? Is that what this other item is? John Bond confirmation? Yeah, well, come on up. It's on the consent agenda. We, we have to, you have to do this under public participation because only if it gets pulled by a councilperson.
Okay. I'll make it real briefly.
Yeah.
You know, you're accepting, you're looking for nominations for the board adjustments. I'm glad that John Bond stepped up there. And so I just wanted to, you know, find out how, you know, with our vulnerability study, with our talk about solar-ready buildings and stuff like that, how that will factor into the adjustment process, so. But we can wait until that comes up. I was hoping that John Bond might be able to address those and if it's appropriate questions, that'd be fine, you know?
He's aware of it now, I guess he'll address it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's why, you know, we had to... It's hard to explain. I have two more from, or item number two, two more. Alicia Spring and Bernie Lennon, I guess is the last.
Alicia Spring, 126 Oak Lane. I'm speaking to the resolution that's under the consent agenda. I'm not opposed to the resolution, I'm opposed to it taking us five years to get here. I'm opposed to the fact that the city paid tons of money. I think that's a question the council member should ask. How much did the city pay to have this survey done when they had all, they already had that very survey and the right-of-way polls are in the ground and have been for all these years? So it was, it was too bad that the city has taken five years to resolve this issue and has paid a lot of money for a survey that was not necessary. If the city had stuck to its own right-of-way right from the beginning, we would have been okay. Thank you.
Bernard Lennon.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Bernie Lennon, 126 Oak Lane. I prepared a three-page statement on the resolution and the ordinance this evening. I hope you look at those and consider those before you make your decision this evening. They kind of speak for themselves. And if you can make sure that that's entered into public record. Thank you.
I don't want to be resetting a week. I just before. Counsel, you guys, we're going to go into... I have a presentation to do. If y'all want to read yours, well, I'll do that and I should have been here before that. I have a presentation for, or a proclamation for Robert Jordan and Ms. McGrudy. Meet me at the podium, I will... This is a proclamation from the city of Cape Canaveral, whereas the Economic Commission of Florida's Space Coast is officially launching a county-wide Space Coast Salutes Our Military Recognition Campaign to encourage regional awareness and appreciation of our United States Armed Forces, their family members who have economic impact of $1.1 billion in fiscal year 217, 2018, and military retirees residing in Brevard County who receive over $992.8 million in military pensions. Whereas Brevard County is home to Patrick Air Force Base, Cape Canaveral Air Force Station, the 45th Space Wing, Naval Ordnance Test Unit, Florida National Air Guard, United States Coast Guard, and numerous military organizations and their family, all of whom strengthen our community economic quality and life. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize, honor, and encourage the dedication and commission of members of the United States Armed Forces in serving in the United States and whereas building partnerships between public, private, and private sector, our military personnel and their families solidifies our commitment to and our appreciation of United States Armed Forces services and preserving our freedoms. Therefore, I, Robert Hoag, Mayor of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim that the city of Cape Canaveral joins the Economic Development Commission in celebrating our military and supporting the Space Coast, salutes our military bumper sticker campaign. Signed and sealed the 16th day of September, 2019. Robert Hoag.
Sure. I've never met a Mike that I didn't like, so I appreciate the opportunity here. Of course, I'm a city council member in Titusville, Florida, so certainly want to give respect to our mayor, Mayor Walt Johnson, and Mayor Pro Tim, who is Dan Diesel, along with Sarah Stokoe and Jolynn Nelson, who makes up our council. In America, we enjoy a lot of freedom and we sometimes, or most of the time, we take for granted those who are in the military. And a lot of them spend a lot of time away from their families so that we can spend time with our families. So it was just appropriate for us at this time to make sure that we are saluting those who keep us free. And freedom is never free, for sure. And I love America. I went over to Brazil and I couldn't wait to get back to America, to be honest with you, because we have our own way of doing things, but we do know that when we are Americans, we can. And so on behalf of those military families, I want to really thank this council for producing this proclamation because it says a whole lot. You represent thousands of people. So the military knows that we are, you are behind them in everything they're doing to keep us free. So thank you so much for the...
Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask if indeed you could let us have some more of these little things for our car windows. Thank you.
You don't have to run off, Robert. You have a good evening. Good seeing you again. Thank you.
He's got seven more meetings to go to tonight.
Okay, we had our presentation and we're going to move into the consent agenda? Oh, interview, I'm sorry.
Well, how about a board interview?
Yeah, we got a board interview. John Bond. I forgot.
I'm back.
You know, you know the procedure, John.
I do. And John Bond, 8931 Lake Drive. I am a business owner as well as a homeowner.
He wants to ask you some questions first.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Brown.
You don't remember the review.
Yes, thank you.
All the information in your application, due and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, please explain to the council why you would like to serve on the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, I am a, I own a business and a home in the city. I have, was a, I was a previous council member for almost, almost two terms, actually maybe a little bit more, I'm not sure. And I was also the chair of the Board of Adjustment for several years before that. So I know the process, I know the paperwork, I know everything, you know, the generous salary and benefits to go with it. So when the city asks me to help, I'm here. Be happy to, happy to serve.
I don't really have any questions, I know you, but stick around, you might get grilled a little bit. Go ahead, if you want to start, Angela, go ahead.
John, thank you. You've been a big part of this community.
Well, thank you.
Tell us where your new office is because I can't read the fine print.
Well, okay, well, if you, if you, it's the Copper Top Building directly east of the Cumberland Farms, across the street.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yep, thank you, John. You're somebody that I've collaborated with, as, as Councilmember Randalls said, you are a big part of this community and you, one of the things that you always say is, I do it because it's my duty and I think that's admirable for this community. So thank you for serving, thank you for doing it, as you said, it's not for the pay and thank you for always being involved. You're responsive to anyone and everyone. And for those of you who don't know John, he is a true servant leader, so I appreciate all that you've done in the past and willing to get back out there again and do it, do it once more, so thank you.
Well, thanks for those kind words.
It speaks highly of you, John, for after leaving the council, you stuck around, you're still active in all the city events. I see you at Friday Fest and among other things. Welcome aboard and you need to work on your golf game.
I have been doing that all summer, I'm ready for you.
I don't have anything to add other than the fact, John, welcome back and I know you'll do us a good job like in the past. Appreciate you offering your help. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 201920, appointing John Bond.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
We aren't ready yet?
No, no.
It shows up in the next one.
Hang tight. We'll let you do it when we get to it.
I just want to say then, that I want to get my time to thank you very much, John, for, and I am going to make this motion to approve it. Thank you.
All right, now we can get back into... The consent agenda has seven items. You can see them all. Need a motion to pull any or we'll pass it as written?
I, I move to pull items number two and three, please.
Items two and three for discussion. Okay, anybody else have anything they want to... I look for a motion to pass one, four, five, six, and seven.
Mayor, I move to pass consent agenda items one, four, five, six, and seven.
Thank you. Need a second?
I second it.
We have a second to approve by Mr. Morrison, items one, four, five, and six, seven, and a second by Mrs. Raymond. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, Mr. Morrison.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just, on item number two, Resolution Number 201913, certifying a right-of-way maintenance map of Oak Lane, we heard from the residents today about their, you know, enthusiasm after half decade of getting this through. But with this new information presented here, I, I wanted just to, first of all, without having a chance to read it and understand it, there are, just at a quick glance, some, some concerns here that if this isn't a pending issue or, you know, pressing that we, we table this item, and I would like to, I move that, that we do that without discussion, item 201913. That's my motion, thank you.
Can you, tell me again why you want to pull it? I was...
Yep, I wanted to pull it because I didn't want to vote to support it. I want to, I'm making a motion to table it.
Okay.
It does need a second, is that correct?
That's, that's true.
Randalls would move to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table item number two and a second. You call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Against.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion to table.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, item number two is pulled from the table by a vote of four to one. Okay, Mr. Morrison, item three.
Thank you, sir. Number three is just a short question in the summary for item three, which is, for the audience to know, this is Resolution Number 2019, authorizing an addendum to the agreement for the municipal law enforcement services between the city of Cape Canaveral and the Sheriff's Department under Sheriff Wayne Ivey. And every year we go back under our five-year contract and renegotiate this addendum. And I just want, in the, in the, let me, give me a second to go to the summary page here. Thank you very much. Lisa, you got it there, where it says here that the, the addendum includes the staffing level increases as discussed in depth at the first budget workshop and is included in the proposed 201920 fiscal year budget. And I'm looking for a brief explanation on, to make sure we're on the same page of what this includes. Not every detail, but at a high level, is this, you know, more officers? If whoever we think is appropriate for the staff to answer that, that would be very helpful.
John?
Five, six, and seven.
Counsel, counsel for us, you're referring to what was, may have, what was discussed when it came to...
Change in the contract or the...
Yeah, I think one of the big issues in our strategic planning was for some, you know, more, more focused effort out on A1A, which, you know, I, we haven't really formally discussed with, with our commander and, but most importantly, it, it's about what, what new additions are going to be in this, in this service level, in this contract? Are we getting some new deputies?
Well, in the past, in the past year and then up through, I believe it was July, there was the addition over that period of time of two deputies. That's specifically what that has to do with.
Okay, and so we've...
So that was funded, that's funded in that contract, the 2.8 million.
Okay, got it, so...
That's exact, that's all, that's, that's what it is. There's nothing else there.
Then we have alignment. So two new deputies will come in with you. Excellent.
Right.
That's all the questions I had. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any Sheriff Department budget question? I, I know we always had that cost about Avon by the C kind of as a, additional cost.
MSTU, yeah.
That was, doesn't really relate to the city's cost, but it's...
Not at all, it's a payback to the city.
To be involved. But I never had any problem with that because of the services we rendered back from the county for doing that, not only in the sheriff's office, but through dispatching and so forth and things like that, that they give us back for nothing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
You, the question's been answered, so...
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have anything?
Correct, let me, let me make a correction because there was a, kind of like an overlay on, on the two deputies, okay? Because it actually occurred last year, kind of in the middle, one, one last year and then an additional one this year. And it, it was a little bit confusing because it, it's not like it went from, say, our fiscal year October to September, but it may have went from January through December and the other went from July to. So I want to make that correction, okay? So we do have two deputies over the last, you could say, year and a half or two years, but, but the timing is not, not everything starts at the beginning of the fiscal year. That's all.
No problem, okay.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve if we want to move forward.
I, Mr. Mayor, I think I move that we approve Resolution Number 201914, authorizing an addendum to the agreement for the municipal law enforcement services between the city of Cape Canaveral and the Brevard County Sheriff's Department.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Mrs. Raymond to approve the 201914 Sheriff's Agreement. Call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we are going to go to the agreement with the separation of Mr. Green and the se... city. Before we get into the agenda items, we had our vote to add it on, and we're at that point now to where we will discuss this agreement that was executed with Mr. Green. I know you just got it this evening. Take a minute and review it. And if you have any questions, answer them the best we can. Mr. Garganese is here to explain everything that we had done.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, is it appropriate that we call for a 10-minute or break recession? Just right here for, okay? Thank you.
We can do it if somebody...
Yeah, for the audience, I feel like it would take some, some pressure off. We just received this agreement. If this council could...
We'll just give a recess for 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, before you do that, for the, before you do the recess, I want to, I want to just to...
We're going to pull back in for a minute. Mr. Garganese wants to say something.
I know, I know, our, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Campbell?
You wouldn't mind, please, the city surveyor that did the Oak Lane surveyor. Just, just so you, there are some people here that are also want, are interested in the ordinance related to Oak Lane. My recommendation, given the fact that you tabled the resolution, that the Oak Lane ordinance should be tabled as well because the Oak Lane ordinance that affords the remedy to the property owners depends on the resolution adopting the right-of-way map that the city council tabled. So, you know, until the council's willing to take action on the resolution, I would recommend that you not take action on the ordinance. So I would table that item or postpone it.
Item number 10, correct?
Yes, the last public hearing item. Just so, you know, in case somebody was waiting for that particular item, you know, my recommendation is that you delay any action on it.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the attorney to delay the item number 10, which is Oak Lane, the ordinance for Oak Lane in conjunction with the item two being pulled and tabled, so...
Mayor, are you moving to item?
Looking for a table item number 10.
Make a motion that we table item 10 until...
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table item number 10, the revision of the Oak Lane. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion to table.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, now we're back to, we're going to do a 10-minute recess so that we can read this.
I...
Reconvene our council meeting? Okay, we have all our present, council president again. We have before us the agreement between Mr. Green and the city for separation. And you've had the chance to read it. And we need to discuss this and agree to either this or whatever we come to the conclusion.
Mr. Carr, are you looking for a motion?
Yep, I have some questions.
Okay.
This is, just so the audience knows, this came to me, I don't have the exact time, but 5:30, I could be wrong, give or take 10, 15 minutes. And so what we just had to do was a fire drill to read through what's before us, and if I understand this correctly, this is titled, "Consider Approving Mutual Separation Agreement with David L. Green." David Green is our city manager. And my first question is, it says submitting department director, not applicable. Where did this come from? Who drew this agreement up? And whoever drew it up, who was directed to draw it up?
I met with Mr. Green yesterday morning and told him about certain things I'm not going to get into. And we talked, and he discussed his departure and told me what he wanted. And I had only one question was the COBRA pay. I didn't know the amount, I didn't have the figure with me. And he laid out his agreement, what he wanted. I told him I would get with the attorney and draw up an agreement with the attorney as Mr. Green requested, and this is exactly as Mr. Green asked for. And I told him that I would put it on the council agenda and get with the attorney, and here we are.
And so when I reviewed his contract, one of the first things I did was review that and understand it. If we essentially terminate, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, if we terminate, if we fire David Green without cause, he would get six months of severance pay and I believe everything listed here in this agreement. So in the event that we say goodbye, no reason, you walk with $75,191 in severance pay, $5,009 in COBRA, continued health coverage not to exceed six months, and a paid time off of 480 hours times $75 an hour, which is another $36,000. So well over $100,000 in the event that we fired him. This, to me, is basically the city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, saying, "I quit. I don't want to go forward anymore." And to give him the same, over $100,000 in him quitting, to me, this is rushed, and I feel that we do not have to settle for this amount of money. The circumstances before us, and the question that maybe you can help me out with, Mr. Mayor, is why does he want to, from what I see, quit? Why does he no longer want to be our city manager?
I'm going to defer that over to the attorney because there are certain circumstances that I can't answer questions for legal reasons, and I would let the attorney answer that question. And if you would explain to Mr. Morrison, Mr. Garganese, the circumstances and something that's beyond what I could answer because of the agreement.
Well, as the agenda item states, I mean, this is being requested through the mayor and the city manager. It's my understanding that the mayor and the manager want to present this, and the manager is seeking a mutual separation from the city. And in exchange for a mutual separation, there is severance pay, you know, the COBRA pay, and PTO. You are correct that under his current employment agreement, if he's effectively terminated, then, you know, he's entitled to six months severance pay. And it's my understanding that, the mayor, with your discussion, as it was relayed to me with the manager, that you know, he believes, and the mayor believes, that this is, under the circumstances, the best thing for the city, just to move forward with a clean break. And that's what a mutual separation agreement does. It affords an opportunity for the parties to have a clean break. They afford each other general releases, and a new chapter is opened without dealing with, you know, any issues relative to, you know, actual termination, actual resignation, or dealing with issues.
And so if he was to resign, what's the difference in the mutual separation and him quitting or resigning?
If he, I am not aware of him resigning per se. What was presented to me, that this would be a mutual separation. So I can't speak for, you know, the manager regarding resigning from his position.
Well, I guess I'm asking, in his contract, does it spell out what happens in the event that he resigns?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and if he resigns, then he's not entitled to severance pay.
And that's the point I want to make.
He would be entitled to pay time off, I mean, accrued. The city has something very unique in that it's it's a PTO, PTO, which is accrued. And my understanding is when employees leave the city, they're entitled to payment of that accrual. And then COBRA, by law, he would be entitled to elect if he so choose. But, you know, the law doesn't require the city to pay that COBRA payment. In this particular case, this is a request for the mutual separation, is that the city would cover the cost of the COBRA payment up to six, up to six months.
And, okay, and so that's the big fundamental point I want to make, and we're all learning this together today. Our city manager no longer wants to be employed, and he wants the same benefits, the same severance pay, as if we fired him without cause. So to say that this is good for the taxpayers, for you, I'm having a hard time with that. $75,000 is a request, and if Mr. Green wants to make that request, fine, he's allowed to ask for that. And it's this body's job to think about, is that good for our city? If he is essentially no longer interested in performing the services of this city, I believe that he wants a resignation. And if he wants a resignation, I think that that looks like a much more comfortable exit for me personally, and I know that my constituents would agree, many of them, to think that that we have not had time to prepare mentally on who's going to replace our city manager. That's not an issue to me today. Talking to my council and friends up here, the city manager can continue to do his job. And if he does not want to continue to do his job, then he needs to, in my opinion, resign. And to say that, you know, we would pay him out in a manner that's not consistent with the actions, doesn't seem very responsible. And I just ask that, at minimum, we table this item because this is, in my opinion, a very lopsided exit. Mr. Green served us for a long time, and I hate that it's came to this rush of a decision, that here we are before us making it, and I think that we do not need to get in a hurry.
Excuse me?
We need to, we need to slow down and do this the right way, and I'd like to talk to my citizens and the public a little bit longer and say, hey, is this six-month severance pay something that you believe is, that's good, essentially, if he no longer wants to continue? Now, if he did something like malfeasance, misfeasance, you know, and we terminate him, that's another issue. If we terminated him without cause, I'll finish, council member, and then I would be okay with that. But you can't have your cake and eat it too. I mean, this is, he's getting the best of both worlds, and I don't see the logic in it. I don't got the total number, but it's well over $100,000, and I was skim reading, he can, I don't know why we agreed to this, but he can then apply for unemployment in addition to the severance pay. And so I just, I'm having a hard time with this one, and I don't think it's very responsible. Thank you.
Wes, I think that in some cases like this, as the attorney pointed out, I think that as a city, sometimes we have to be careful when we have things like this that are very sensitive and a sensitive nature. There might be things here that we don't know or understand fully, but that it was already deemed by the mayor and by the city manager that this is a good thing for our city, and that there are reasons that we may not know fully that this is to create a healthy atmosphere in our city and that we should move forward. And I think sometimes we don't want to go into a big legal battle or anything like that. So sometimes things have to be worked out for maybe the benefit of both parties. And in this case, even though it sounds like a lot of money, and it is, and you might not think it's fair, sometimes we have to look at all parties that are involved in this and say, this is the best thing for our city. I just want you to kind of look on, look a different way at this, maybe a way that you haven't looked at. I've been in situations at the university, very similar to this, and had to sit and make decisions when I was on executive committees. And they are difficult, and it doesn't seem fair. And I understand that, but as our attorney pointed out, and if you look carefully at the employment agreement, and, you know, I think that the mayor wanted the best thing for the city, too. And look at both sides of it. Thank you.
And I'll just reply, and I appreciate that perspective, and it's something that I don't think I'm blind to. And I think that what's best for the city are the people who are paying for it, is the ones we need to look at first. And David Green has served here for a while, and there's nothing shorthanded that I feel about removing the severance pay at a minimum and any other benefits that would not be treated in a normal, this is a resignation. And if we wanted this in the contract that we've had enacted for over, I don't know, 10 years now, if we wanted these terms, then why didn't we put them in the original contract? And so here we are with terms that are in the incident that do not fit what's happening. And so, you know, if there's not any other discussion on this, I would move that we treat, well, I actually have one more question. Who signed, I've got a signature here that says, is that you, Josh? It's J.S. J.S. on behalf of David Green?
Correct.
Okay, got it. And so he has not even signed off on this, but did you get a verbal commitment?
The back page has got a signature, if you look at the last page.
I'm looking at the summary.
The back page?
Okay.
Signed in a reach of, I am.
Okay, on this, thank you. Yeah, I would move that we table this item.
You speak, wait before you.
Okay, I'll hold my motion, thank you.
Okay, are you through, Mr. Councilman Morrison?
Maybe, I don't know.
Okay. Hey, we were hired, we were hired by the citizens to make decisions. Every time that you come before council, not every time, you were hired to make tough decisions, not always go out to talk to the people in the community. That's what your job entitled, to make decisions, whether they're easy decisions or tough decisions. And that's what we're here before to accomplish. And sometimes we've got to make these decisions. Anthony, was, in the original contract, was this in his original contract when he was, was he, when he was hired? As far as the severance pay?
Mutual separation is not set forth in the agreement. The agreement covers termination by the city council, in which case, if he's terminated, he's entitled to severance pay with, you know, some exceptions. And if the manager chooses to voluntarily terminate the contract, then he's required by contract to give the city 30 days notice, three days notice, of his request to terminate the contract. As it was explained to me, what's being presented to the council, and that's what the text of this agreement says, this is a mutual separation agreement. Meaning if the council were to approve this, given that David has already signed off on this, then this would be considered a mutual separation and a negotiated, and a negotiated exit from employment with the city. This is, as it was presented to me, you know, just for the record, I used the standard separation agreement that the city uses on a regular basis and modified it to include the terms that were provided to me to present to the city council. This was done rather short order. We were able to get an agenda item put out and, you know, to the council before the meeting. I know it's short notice, but this required very quick action. You know, and that's all I can tell you.
So what you're saying is, is six-month severance is negotiable? Is that what you're saying?
A mutual separation agreement is negotiable. It's not uncommon, in my experience. It's a policy decision, but it's not uncommon when a city manager leaves employment to negotiate a mutual separation agreement. It's a policy decision for the city council, six-month severance is the maximum severance pay that you can afford under the law, and that's what's set forth in this document. I mean, you can accept it, the terms or not. You know, we tried very hard to get this put together for you to have an open discussion regarding whether or not you find this agreement acceptable. It's the council's call. These are the terms that are being presented by the manager and the mayor.
And if I can reply to your comment, Mayor Per Tim Brown, on the tough decision, I would propose to you today that the tough decision is to not go along with what the city manager is wanting here by his signature. The tough decision is actually to go against the grain here, and I think you're heading down the right track, to say, wait a minute, if this wasn't in the original, if he is supposed to give us 30 days notice, I mean, we woke up yesterday, he's our city manager, he's not going to be our city manager effective, you know, immediately? What are, why are we rushing this? I will make a tough decision and say, I will accept the terms of this agreement that are consistent with what the original contract said upon a resignation, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, we would strike through the six-month severance pay of $75,191, and I believe we would remove the accrued time off. I'm not sure about the COBRA, but I think.
You would not remove the?
The time off would stay, so just the severance pay and the COBRA?
The financial contribution for the six months, up to six months of COBRA is not required by law, but eligibility for COBRA is.
Okay.
So you're correct. Financially, if you want to look at financially, what's not currently required under the contract? If you assumed, and it's an assumption, because it's not, that's not what's being presented. This was a voluntary termination with notice, then he would not be entitled to the $75,000 change separation severance pay, and he would not be entitled to the $5,009.94 contribution for the payment of his, up to six months of COBRA.
And so I'm.
But in addition, you know, keep in mind, I mean, just for the general discussion, all of the releases that are in this document are also not specifically set forth in the employment agreement.
Can you elaborate a little bit more, when you say the releases, these are the terms that he had?
The broad, yeah, the broad general releases, like, for example, you know, subparaphrase, I mean, not subparagraph, paragraph three. You know, that type of language, that broad, very comprehensive release, releasing the city and its employees and agents of any and all liability relative to his employment with the city is not something that's in the employment contract. That's something that generally and ordinarily is bargained for in a separation agreement.
Okay.
I had a question about the COBRA. It says up to. Once Mr. Green signs up for Medicare or Tri-Care, then is the COBRA paid per month? Isn't that right, that the COBRA is paid per month?
Yeah, COBRA is a monthly, generally speaking, a former employee is eligible for COBRA, which is a fancy federal term to stay on the city's insurance policy. Generally, the way it works on a separation of employment, then the former employee signs up for COBRA, stays on the insurance policy, and then is required by law to remit the insurance premium to the city to pay the cost of staying on the city's insurance plan. Okay? Now, you know, I can't speak to Mr. Green's health insurance and what he needs or doesn't need, or what, I can't speak to that. Even though you're on, generally speaking, even though a former employee is on Medicare, whether it's Medicare A and B, that former employee can still elect COBRA and still potentially, depending on the individual circumstances of the former employee, get extra insurance benefits by being on COBRA that may not be, may not result from Medicare. That's my general understanding. So, you know, he is requested, you know, up to six months. I don't know what that means in terms of him, you know, getting his insurance, health insurance in order. So that's what was requested. It may be, it may be shorter than six months that the city pays, or it could be the full six months.
So that's a guesstimate?
I don't.
The $5,000, whatever is a guesstimate.
Probably, I would consider that the maximum.
Okay, and the Tri-Care, since Mr. Green is a veteran, Vietnam veteran, I understand. I don't quite get that. I thought that once you were a veteran and served the way he did, that he would automatically get that Tri-Care.
I can't speak to that, I don't know.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's necessary, it's up to council.
Rocky, did you have time to?
Yeah. Did you want to speak, John?
I think Jane wanted to.
Yeah, what? Yeah, I was going to ask her, Jane, if you want to answer this question, this is.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
I don't know. I don't, I.
I don't want to interrupt, if you're still going, Wes.
Are you about to make a motion? I just, I had just a couple.
You made a motion for table, and it didn't get a second.
Well, we had, no.
I withdrew.
He withdrew that before, because Mr. Brown hadn't had a chance to speak, and we would like to hear from her. And you want to speak, go ahead.
Yeah, if indeed it's my turn.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I would like to address this. I've had the privilege of listening and reading, maybe some of you didn't perhaps while there, but so I read. I looked this over, and I was the person that signed the agreement for the city council back in 2009 or 10 or something, at that time, I was the mayor then. And what we signed and what we agreed upon was a continuing contract. Anthony, is that the correct word? It's a continuing contract between the city and the employee. And it entailed some fallback provisions that we would not activate anything against him without just cause and things like that. And these were in the document, it's nothing new. It was standard operation for a city manager because they, over a decision, and they have to keep three people happy all the time out of the five. And if that doesn't happen for some reason, then it becomes this. My point is like on page four, at the very bottom, item number 11, I'm reading, it's a voluntarily agreement. This agreement is freely and voluntarily executed by the employee after being made fully aware of all relevant information and data. In executing this agreement, the employee does not rely on any inducements, promises, or representations made by the city, releases of their attorney, other than those expressly set forth herein. And that leads me to another item I listed here, is number two along that line. I'm on page six, page five of six, small print, I'm sorry, and I'm reading item 14. It says, entire agreement, no other benefit or consideration shall be extended by the city or releases other than that expressly cited. That's an important thing in any mutual agreement, is that the man said, I changed my mind or the person. Over here, and I'm on page two at the bottom, and item number four, it says, the promise to forego legal action and identification. In consideration of this, of these severance covenants and promises of the city as stated in the agreement, the employee agrees upon signing this agreement, never to file any lawsuits, charges, or complaints. And I'm going on to page three. or any complaints, any federal, state, on and on, and based on any claims and anything. That's a legal ease, I'm guessing, but it probably covers every available opportunity that would leave an employee that's no longer desired by the city to say, ooh, I don't have a right to do this. I'd have to put in place, from my knowledge, of what I gather on this, just this, this was a situation between our mayor, representing the city, representing employees, and representing the city council, made a decision based on circumstances that we may not know, and maybe don't have the right to know. I have enough faith in him and the employees that are affected by this to say that it's an agreement, and, you know, some of us have been in similar situations, it was called marriages, and we, it went, it went astray, and not always did we get what we wanted. We thought forever, maybe was forever. Well, in this kind, it was a continuing contract, it did not end, it got renewed automatically upon your, our acceptance that he was satisfied for there, and we gave him a raise. What he is asking for was in the original contract back in 2009 or 10, very plain, it wasn't written for him, it was a standard contract between city, cities and city managers, truthfully, because they sometimes don't have a long existence, either because they didn't count to three, or maybe, whatever the case may be. But when three people say, you know, I've had about all the cake I want, and I'm willing to reap the causes and the effects, and somebody says, okay, buy me out, and I think that's what's happened. I think the value to the employees, to the city residents, and to the city council will end with this, because it says right on here that, effective the 17th, and now I presume, upon signing this contract, we have not signed it, the city has not signed it, because this is the first we've seen it, but it says, effective mutual agreement of all known and unknown, agreed and to before me this 17th day of September, and its termination. I think the marriage is over. And I understand that the responsibility that we put in play when we signed this, I don't think anything needs to be said about, he didn't say, or I didn't say, or we didn't understand, or that. The situation is that it's run full course, city manager's been here about nine years, he estimated he would stay five, I believe. Each year, when we gave him a raise, that sort of said, we like what you're doing, you're good for another year. I think the wedding's over. And, Mayor, if I'm the last one to speak, I certainly would make a motion, but I'll wait until somebody else has something.
We have to go to public. Just wanted the council to get their say in.
I didn't, I wasn't, if there was a format to this, everyone speaks, I'm just processing it now. I've got just some more information in this general release that the city attorney brought up that I've got notes on here. Basically, that if three members, like Councilmember Randall said, to terminate without cause, or the city manager and the city council mutually agree to voluntarily terminate his services, then he gets a lump sum severance pay equal to six months of his current base salary. Under this provision, he will also get a general release indemnifying and holding him harmless for all acts related to his employment with the city. That's a concern of mine, that is a red flag. I, we had, that was not in the original contract. The cit-
Actually, they did.
Okay, and so, I have it flipped.
15 of the employment agreement, the city will identify.
Okay. Okay, and then, he basically wants to be, like you said, bought, wants to be terminated without the penalties, and I'll sum it up at that. In a marriage, if you walk out, you know, you don't always get what you want, and what I'm seeing is he's walking out.
No, I don't-
And we deserve 30 days' notice so we can shift and adjust to this. I would be willing to even go to a short, I mean, we don't have to table this for 30 days, but to make a decision tonight is just what I'm really wrestling with.
I guess I wasn't real clear.
Yeah.
Wes, this action became a joint decision between two people, it was not intimated upon one or the other, it was, the marriage is over. It wasn't, I caught you this, or you didn't do this, it just isn't working.
Mm-hmm. I understand.
And that's, without each of us taking a course of bad or whatever, no, I think it was mutually agreeable, well, it says so if I read it here.
Mutual separation agreement between the city and David Green.
What, but the mutual is where three or more, right? And so, if-
We agreed, when we signed this contract, as every city does, that if we change positions up here, and there's somebody that says, I don't like what's happening, and there's three of them, the party's over.
Yes, sir, I understand, thank you.
I just want to mention one thing, and I have to be careful how I say this, Weston, it might answer a lot of your thoughts, but, and Anthony, you told me if I should or shouldn't, but I would like to tell you that this just wasn't my decision, and I can't go any further than that.
Okay.
But I went, for prob, people, you don't really understand what's involved. I would love to just tell you, but I can't. And I would just be sure that I'm not doing this for my self-satisfaction, that's what I gotta say. And Rocky nailed it, so I don't need to say anymore. I'm gonna say, nothing other than if we're through on it, open it to public discussion, I do have two cards on it, and there will be not any questions answered, you can come up and say what you want, but I will not answer any questions for my agreement with Mr. Green. We shook hands, it wasn't nasty departing, he says, Bob, you ever need me, just call me. But the termination was his agreement, no problem, and I will say no more, other than the fact that I have two cards and I will hear you. Mr. Campbell, you were first.
If there's no more discussion, you're going to the audience?
I'm gonna go to the audience, and then we come back for a motion. I don't think we need to discuss it anymore. I can't discuss it, just, I'm here with it, that's all I can say.
Rocky, thank you for the marriage reference. However, I do want to point out, this is not a marriage, it's the government, and as such, it needs to be visible to the citizens, and I, as a citizen, aren't seeing what's going on. I sat here a couple of months ago, and was, I sat right here, and was told what a wonderful job he was doing, and he was the best thing that ever happened in the city of Cape Canaveral. And now, all of a sudden, we have this thing going on, we can't say what's going on, we want him out. So, having said that, I don't want to pay $105,000 to get him out, until I see what we're doing, and I think that's my right as a citizen. Thank you.
Mr. Osborne.
Well, when I handed that card in, it was about the release, and you just started talking about it, so I guess we're on the same wavelength, so that's pretty much been covered. Rocky brought that up, and I want to echo Patrick's wishes too, that, you know, that people probably want to know more, and that's all I had to say. Thank you.
All I can faithfully and fairly tell you is that he asked me a certain few things, and I agreed to the, and being, some of the numbers here that we're looking at, but the conversation that took place was something that, in my opinion, would be worse than what we're paying to get out of, what we're satisfying this situation with. And I, I'm a guy on my word, I told him that the agreements and that Mr. Garganese wrote up, as far as us taking any action against him, or him taking any action against us, it was a mutual, it had to be done that way, that's all I can really say. I think if, one day it may come out, I don't know, but I think, I'm not trying to hide anything, this is something that had to be done. That's all I have to say. Move for a motion.
And I, I move to table this item, and I will, I am open to, sooner, I will, we can do an emergency meeting, but reasonable time should be presented to this council to do the tough thing, read this two or three times, should be talking with our constituents, the taxpayers, and come in with an educated decision to do this. I move that we table this, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, what are the stipulations if we don't agree on this? Is he still employed, or what, what are we?
I'm, I'm-
Is that, Anthony?
I just wish, I just wish I could tell you the reasons. If you, if, it's not me, it's not my reasons. I'm working for the city, I don't work for Bobby Hoag, I work for this city, and we have people in this city, not citizens, working people in this city, that work in this city. It's very hard to say, and I can't, I can't expound on what, but there, to me, I don't know, how far should I go with this, Anthony? You're my counsel, eh?
That's about as far as you can go relative to that particular comment, but I would like to address, you know-
I have your phone, please.
It's on. You know, the, Councilman, your question regarding what happens if the council doesn't approve the mutual separation agreement, then there is not an effective termination of his employment. We end up in the status quo. What happens, I can't predict, but I would imagine we're in the, I mean, we're in the status quo, and see where it goes from there.
I don't want to see it go there, but I, I just, I'm, I really can't speak.
Mayor, if indeed we did not get a second for the proposed motion.
For table, are we open for another motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, I, Randall speaking, would consider approving a mutual separation agreement with David Green and the city of Cape Canaveral, as prepared and signed by David Green as a volunteer person, and waiting for our signature as it's been prepared.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
Is there the motion by Mr. Randall's, in a second, by Ms. Randall's, to accept, Raymond, I'm sorry.
This is Raymond, I'm not Mary Dan.
I'm sorry. I just want to get this, I just want to get this over with. By Ms. Raymond, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Councilmember Randall's?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Okay, before we move on, I think we need to do an interim, an appointment for an interim city manager, that's up to the council. We're open for, I'm sorry?
Mayor, you could defer that to the last item on the agenda if you desire, because I know there's a couple of other-
I would like to, okay.
There's a couple of public hearing items, it's up to the council.
That's, I'd rather do it that way, and get our agenda done, because I know a lot of people here probably got other things I wanted to go do, so. I just, we'll go back to our regular agenda. We did do, we got rid of 10, right? Was that the one?
Seven, eight.
So, we're on item number eight?
Eight.
Which would be recreation, establishing recreation and conservation zonings, the second reading, ordinance number 15, 2019, Mr. Garganese.
It's ordinance of the, 2015, I'm sorry, ordinance number 15-2019, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Bubbar County, Florida, establishing public recreation and conservation zoning districts, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this item, also a public hearing item, title's pretty self-explanatory, we discussed it at the last meeting, and the planning and zoning board's recommended approval. This would establish two new zoning districts, one for public recreation, and the other for conservation. The game plan, of course, is that the city is in the process of an administrative rezoning of certain lands that are currently being used for public recreation, and that are currently designated conservation. The game plan is, once this ordinance gets approved, then the city staff would then move forward with the administrative rezonings of the subject property to give them appropriate zoning designations. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel?
Nothing from me, but maybe to the public, unless Wes got it.
I do get it, I get the discussion, I, yeah, one of the things that, after, this is why we do two readings, is when you dig in deeper, I've noticed that the principled uses in section 110, 381 of this, public, these are laid out, and I don't know if there's, you know, definitions for them, but public facilities such as kayak launches, skate parks, community centers, amphitheaters, picnic tables, when we start talking about amphitheaters, community centers, due to the lack of definition of what that is, if we can get some definitions on that, that would make this easier, or move these to special exception under section 110, 383, not principal uses, because when we think about the residence, basically, whatever we're designating is a public area, that an amphitheater without definition could essentially pop up in any public place within this city, that gives me some concerns. So, with a definition, that would strengthen the understanding, what do we mean by amphitheater, number one, if we, I don't think we have a definition. Number two, with a definition, either put it in special exception to where we can look at these properties on a case-by-case basis, because if you want to put, you know, a skate park at Patriots Park, right by Long Point Road, they might not want that, right? And we are basically saying today, nope, it's principled use, we're going through it. And what would be better, I think, is to have the opportunity to go in, under either a special exception, or go back in through the zoning and tier these public uses based on, you know, intensity, so public one, public two, public three, to where your stormwater and, you know, facilities are, are very similar to how we do commercial, industrial areas are only permitted in the P3 district, as an example, or, you know, the community center with its definition is not going to be allowed at Patriots Park. And while we sit here and go, oh, that would never happen, I think this is an opportunity, if it's not a substantial change, I know we've advertised this, I'm not advocating to delay this in any cases, to shift these down under a special exception, and if anyone's concerned up here about this stopping any projects that are underway, I would even be okay with it going, you know, from this day, grandfathered in forward, especially, I know that multi-generational facility is in this, and so I'm not advocating against that, so I'd say that can be in here, and moving forward, that there is a little bit more definition, it's vague in its definitions, and the biggest one that jumped out to me is that restaurants, a commercial use is allowed in the public facility under section, gosh, where is it, it's down at the bottom, I think it says, right there in section 110, 382, 3, hope you get there, 110, 382, 3, yep, restaurants and snack bars. Now, we already got a snack bar, if you think about baseball field, that, I don't see the residents getting upset about that, but a restaurant now, where a lot of these public zoning is, is going to be allowed in what is really medium density residential zoned areas. So, when you look at a map at where these public recreational zoning is going to be, the idea that a restaurant with its commercial use and activity is going to be allowed in a residential area, I don't think that's what the residents in the R2 area that surround some of these parks signed up for, and if we could get some specificity on that, restaurants with maybe some limitations, or strike through that entirely. So, I'm happy to go- So I'm happy to go through those, but the three that jumped out, the, the big fix is to make the ones that I just mentioned, move them to a special exception, where we have to approve them on a case-by-case basis, on whatever public use, but this is an across-the-board blanket statement, that restaurants, public parks, public utility facilities could go anywhere. So restaurants could go, you know, if we ever bought Cherry Down Park, they could go there. A lot of residents may want that, I, I'm not here to, to say that, but we deserve, I think, the chance to come back and to treat that on a special exception basis. So amphitheater, restaurants, and community centers with a definition would, I think, be step one, or, and/or move them under section 110, 383, and the special exceptions. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I weigh in with you a little bit on that, as far as the restaurants, I don't understand the restaurants, are we going to operate those? Will they be publicly operated? I don't know where we're going with that. So I agree with you, Ken, on that, amphitheater, that's, that could be something real gigantic, or that could be a grade school, gymnasium, stage, I don't know, I go along with that. So, yeah, there are certain things here that probably we could do, a little tweaking and make it better. I don't like special exceptions. I'd like to nail things down and leave them that way and not be putting things where they don't, because, where they don't belong, or, to me, special exceptions are, we got a rule against that, but we're going to go with it, let you do it, that's special exceptions. So I'd like to term it something different than that, because special exception category, I don't like special exceptions. Special exceptions are for somebody like, to me, a nonprofit that wants to come in and do an event that they don't have a permit for, but go ahead and do it, and we'll get the permit later, or whatever, that's kind of a special exception to me, but I don't like special exceptions, never did, they ruined the city in my book. I, I, I agree with you on, on those, Wes, I think we could probably do a little better of explaining that, maybe, explaining it. What is an amphitheater? How big? Eight, eight, 10 acres? Amphitheater, to me, is fairly large. Well, I mean, mini amphitheater would be an explanation.
If it's moving in a park, you know, that's an amphitheater that's well-received in the community, it's bring your blankets and towels and pull it on a projector and everyone enjoy a movie, but if, yep, if it's...
Yeah. Mayor, if, if the council's asking for us to provide some clarification or definitions, that's fine. I just would like to mention that the five of you will have the say as to whether an amphitheater is ever built, just like the five of you have an opportunity to say if the multi-generational facility is ever going to be built. The amphitheater is going to be on a public property, it's going to be a public-owned property, it's going to be a publicly-developed piece of property, therefore, it's going to be a budget item. Therefore, this city council will be the ones to approve it. Therefore, this city council can go out and meet with their constituents, like has been discussed this evening, and have an opportunity to talk about that and discuss it. And if it is proposed next to an R2 zoning district, this city council can speak to their constituents who live in that R2 district adjacent to the proposed amphitheater. So I, I don't want the impression to be that this is some amphitheater, or any of these uses, is going to get slipped in and under the, you know, in the dark of night. These are all budgetary, budgeted projects that have to go through the budget process, that have to be reviewed by this city council, that will, the RFPs and RFQs and the proposals and the designs, just like this council had an opportunity to be involved in the MGF, the multi-generational facility, this council will be involved in the development of, of the items on here. So I, I certainly don't want there to be the impression that, that these projects are going to be slid through and there'll be no public input, because that's, that's just not, that's just patently incorrect.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I agree with what you're saying. We, we have, we're the ones that make the decision, but I had a question, I would, I did catch when he's asking about the restaurants, in, in the, are they going to be owned or run by a person or a city?
And there, and there again, exactly what I was saying before, these restaurants are going to be on a city-owned property. And as this council knows, if there's a operation on a city-owned property, you, the council, enters into a contract, an agreement with the operator of that property.
One point of clarification, though, Dave, is there are some existing public slash recreation properties within the city of Cape Canaveral that are actually owned by other governmental agencies that may potentially be subject to rezoning, in which case the council, other than, the council would not be approving projects on that agency's property. So that, maybe, want to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, those properties, again, I'm going to, hope I capture all of them, are going to be the school board, and I'm not aware of the school board running a restaurant on any of their properties, other than their cafeteries. Another potential opportunity would be the state. I am, I think the intent here, when we say restaurant, and, and I think it's important to read the rest of that sentence, we're, for some reason, we're not including the rest of that sentence there.
Right. David. Restaurants and snack bars primarily utilized by users of the park or recreational facility.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that gives, the intent is there that it's, it's going to be a scale and a nature to serve the users of that particular facility. So the, the, I'm not sure what the exact concern is, if there's going to be a rest, like a Chili's or a, some kind of restaurant like that put on there, that's totally out of character and out of scope for that, for that particular facility.
Could restaurants be a coffee shop?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's snack bars, and, and again, as I said earlier, if the council would like us to tweak the definitions or, or change some wording, that's fine, we can do that, I'm happy to do that.
We have property, like Anthony referred to, that's owned by other, other than the city?
Yep.
That is recreational in this city, there's like three or four different places, and what's to stop them from putting in a restaurant? Cherry Down Park would be a good, good example right there. I would love to own a restaurant right there.
I have no further, as far as moving forward with no ongoing projects that are going to be affected, I have no issues with the added definitions for amphitheater, snack bar and restaurant, but like, like it was said, that it won't affect any ongoing projects.
Yeah, that's fine.
Don't let it...
It says such as, so, I mean, it's really qualified as far as I'm concerned, I understand it.
And so there are, the point that I think we all concluded is, there are some scenarios, and we'll debate whether they're likely or not, that are completely out of our control to where a Chili's, under this definition, the school board or whoever could come in on Cherry Down Park and lease that property out to a beachfront restaurant. And I echo Mayor Hoag's, what a prime location that would be, right? And it's, to me, that's essentially zoning, it is commercial, and one of the things Cape Canaveral takes a lot of pride in is the lack of, that we are a residential beachside community. And you don't see that in Florida very often, we got that, and we should be proud to preserve it, and so, yeah, if we can, if we can mitigate against that and keep this thing moving forward, I think that that's a, that's a good, that's the right direction, and I guess it's more about the difficulty, Dave, to, let's not make it too easy for it to happen, I agree with you, unlikely, and I see the intent, but let's, I don't want to be caught saying, why didn't you guys see that coming? And so if we can...
Yeah, I guess I...
Keep everything moving forward, and I don't, if definitions accomplish it, that's great, if we can define, hey, on these properties, right? Because I don't think we were trying to speak to, to one or the other, but give us, give us the autonomy we want without having blind spots, so that's...
I guess my question would be to Anthony, I mean, is, this is second reading, would we have to push this a month, or do we have the direction from the council that we need to, to, to make some revisions?
I mean, we wouldn't, to do, to accomplish what the city council appears to want to accomplish, like maybe some definitions or changing some of the phrases, phrases regarding the potential uses, we could, we could, we could make those changes and bring it back for second reading. We would not have to start anew with, with those changes, the way the, the ordinance has been advertised. So we could try to take a stab at it and then bring it back at the next meeting for second, second and final reading again. If that's the pleasure of the council, then you could table this item, and, you know, we'll can, take your comments and come back with some slightly different ordinance.
I mean, there, there's no particular rush here, well, I shouldn't say that, I, I think a, a month delay is doable.
Anthony, you're the person that's got the words here. If a motion that was to be made to lay it aside temporarily, would that be in order?
To bring it back at the next meeting?
Yes.
Then you can just motion to postpone second and final reading until the next city council meeting, and we'll, we'll rework the ordinance a little bit based on the comments that we heard, and we can pick it back up next month.
I think Wes has come up with some good questions with the mayor. If there's no more discussion, I would move to, is the wording here, is to lay the question on the table until the next meeting.
Postpone. Motion to postpone.
Postpone in there, doesn't say it here, maybe my cheat sheet's old.
All right.
Hasn't been updated.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone until our next meeting. Oh, I do have a card, I'm sorry. Is this in reference to this rate? I can't understand what...
Yeah, it is actually, it's section 110, 0.389, prohibit principal uses and structures. I wondered if it was still there. Item number seven, historical sites, is it still there, or was that taken out?
It's still there.
It's still there? Okay, I didn't see it there, okay, thank you.
Okay, back to our motion, it's been motion and then second, to postpone, item ordinance number 15, 2019. Call the roll.
Ready? Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion to postpone.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, Mr. Counsel, do we pass nine, A and B together, or just separately?
They have to be separate.
Separate, okay. Resolution number 20,019, 19, final millage rate, abilorm for the tax year of 2019, 20. Mr. Garganese.
Okay, this is resolution 2019, 19, a resolution of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting a final millage rate for the levy of abilorm taxes for fiscal year 2019, 20, on all taxable property located within the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing item. The ordinance proposes a total millage rate for operating purposes of 3.7256 mils on taxable value for 2019, 20 fiscal year. This millage rate represents a rate below the previous year's rate and a 0.64% decrease below the rollback rate of 3.7495. Additionally, the city council's considering final millage rate of 3, 3.6700 mils for general government millage and 0.0556 mils for library-dependent special district. Again, when you combine those two separate millage rates, the total is, being proposed is 3.7256.
Thank you. Counsel?
I just want to compliment staff, this is a celebration moment, taxes are being lowered, so thank you so much. And I know we get that list of all the cities and every year we rank, I, it would be good to know, out of all the cities, who raised taxes and who lowered them. That's a different stat, you know, I see how we rank fourth from the bottom, but every time I look, everyone's going the, up, and so hats off to you, thank you for making that work.
Yes, the city I live in, Cocoa Beach, they always raise taxes every year, so.
Five of them?
Yeah.
It wasn't yesterday's Florida Today newspaper.
Right, and we, and we can get to that information.
Yeah, easy number, because it just gives me something exciting to share, so thank you. We got plenty of that.
Mr. Randalls, you have something, or?
No, other than if you're looking for a motion, I think it's, have you been to the public yet?
No, not yet, I just want to complete counsel first. Ms. Raymond?
I'm happy. Lower taxes, how...
I'm happy, I'm satisfied.
Well, go to public, but we don't have any cards, if you don't have any, we'll just close public. Back to the council, don't have any cards on anything.
Mr. Mayor, Randalls would move to adopt resolution number 2019, 19, and this is a resolution, so it's the first and only reading of this on this.
A second. Hey, we have a motion and a second on adopting ordinance 16, 20,019, oh, 18, I'm sorry.
2019.
2019. For the final millage, the abilorm tax for the city of Cape Canaveral. Call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Hey, now we're going to go to nine B, item nine B, which is ordinance number 16, 20,019. This is for the annual general fund wastewater enterprises, so, so forth. Second reading, Mr. Garganese.
Okay, ordinance number 16, 2019, an ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the annual general fund wastewater enterprise fund, stormwater enterprise fund, enterprise capital fund, special revenue funds, capital project funds, and agency fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, providing for an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance to proposing to adopt the city's annual budget. Mayor?
Thank you. Counsel? We've had this again before, so, back to us for our final approval. It is a lot of, a lot of good things in there, a lot of it is, most of it is your, not most of it, I should say, but a lot of it is the stormwater Indian River Lagoon, which everybody's always wanting, and I think the city is doing top dollar worth for the Indian River Lagoon by our capital projects that we're doing, and the ones that we have done. I, I have nothing else to add other than go Cape Canaveral.
Yeah, and I just want, you know, I've, I've shared my, I voted against this last time, and today, it's, to me, I do not think that this is in line with the priorities, there are a lot of very good things happening in here, but because I would put more emphasis on finishing the sidewalks, making sure all the streetlights are, are working at all costs, and making sure the infrastructure's there, once that's tightened up and that the attention to detail on infrastructure's where it needs to be, I, you know, I would get on board with this, but unfortunately, I couldn't get some discussions during our workshops with this council, I, it was, I think, a lack of, a difference in philosophy, no one was wrong or right up here, and hopefully next year, we will see that grow and put the heavier tenacity in finishing those things to make sure that our streets all have sidewalks, and I, I've got a, a list of other things, but you know where I stand, and just last time I voted against it, I didn't explain why, and today, it's, I believe the priorities are not in the right order, but have respect for this council, our mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and we shall move forward.
Thank you if I couldn't, Mayor. Wes's explanation is exactly right, we had a larger budget for last year, and we were not able to get successful bids for doing all the completion of the work, some things got postponed, contractors were busy, so it appears, as it's stated, that this is a nine... So it appears, as it's stated, that this is a 9.7% decrease from the fiscal year 18 and 19. It really is a decrease from what we spent. We had planned more. This is the plan, and that's where the word decrease. We just couldn't get contractors to bid on all the work and get it completed, to spend the money that we'd appropriated for it. Is that correct, John? I maybe thumbed around this.
That's, that's, yeah, the things that were projected, we just couldn't get to because of the timing and the contractors and what have you. And it's something that occurs, you know, every, every year, something like that happens. I mean, you can go back in our budget, there's some years, you know, sometimes we didn't spend $2 million.
The work was brought forward into this year with the money.
Exactly, exactly. All brought forward, yeah.
If there's nothing out there, Mr. Chair Randalls would move to adopt ordinance number 16, 20, 19 at the second reading.
I second it.
Hey, motion has been made in second.
I'm sorry.
I don't have any cards for public hearing. Anybody got anything they want to say? I don't have any cards, that's why. Close public hearing. Back to the council. Ordinance number 16, 19, adopting the annual wastewater general fund.
Second deal.
Second reading. Call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hogue?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, item number 10 has been postponed to a later date, and that concludes our agenda items. Other than the, not yet. We have to do the interim city manager appointment, being as we now have no city manager, we need to have an appointed city manager. Open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I have an, an opening thought on that. And it's maybe, it, it needs some discussion, us when we have the time and a clear mind. I believe, I would say that I've got the confidence in, in the staff and their ability to keep the ship in the road for a month until we can get together on this and find out what we are. The difficulty is if we appoint somebody and then they later on decide that they would like to run for the office, well, we have to say you're disqualified because you've been in there, you got a head start. I, I think we need to talk about that, and I certainly got the confidence in the staff to say, keep it in the road, boys till, and girls, till next month. I'm not sure we could really make a selection tonight without going to everybody and saying, do you want her or do you want the real job?
Mr. Garganese?
We need an interim.
Do we have to buy ordinance?
We, we, let our attorney advise us on this matter.
I would, even if, even if it's for a one month time period, I would recommend to the council that somebody be delegated the position of an interim city manager, only because the city charter states that this is a manager council, form of government.
Yes.
And the city manager has certain delegated authority under the city charter to make decisions, administrative and executive decisions. And, you know, in the event those types of decisions need to be made, if no one is delegated with that authority, we're left with no one officially to make that decision on behalf of the city.
Okay.
So I, I think somebody needs to be, you know, delegated that responsibility, even if it's for an interim, interim position. So, you know, staff's not looking around, the directors are looking around, well, who's supposed to make this call and be accountable and responsible for that decision and be vested with the authority by charter to make that decision.
Okay. Was I correct in my assumption that if somebody got appointed, that would disqualify them from being, not really.
No, no, that would not disqualify them from.
Okay.
From putting in for the position, depending on what the council wants to do.
I would like to say that we have a very, very good staff, and I think all of them would make an excellent city manager. It is my recommendation that until we have a city manager, that Mia service the city manager until, at which time, somebody can be selected as an interim.
Was that, that was a motion?
No, that was mine.
Are you just discussion? Yeah, and I'll weigh in on it. I think that I would echo the quality of directors that we have is, is up there. We got a, a well, the team is very well rounded. And I think, when you look at, what are we, what are we looking for to, to carry us through to navigate the ship? Longevity is something that I value. How long you been here and somebody, Todd Morley, I think you know this city, you've been here a long time. And I think you're very professional and you've carried yourself well. Experience, you check a lot of the boxes that I'm looking for. I think Mia checks a lot of those boxes as well. And so that's, that's where, where I fall. Two people I believe are very qualified, and I could keep going down the line, but I think that that's only going to make things more confusing, so thank you.
Would it be appropriate to ask either of them if they would accept it?
Well, we'll go there, but you, you have anything to add to what Ben said?
Nope, nope.
I have a little bit of a different idea, and I don't know if this would be acceptable, but perhaps the staff and the directors need to get together and decide amongst themselves who would be the best fit.
Can't do that right now.
Not right now?
No.
But maybe later.
We have to.
Just an idea that I have, I think would be a creative approach.
I understand, that would be the greatest thing to do after this. And then we could probably come up with somebody at their choosing, which I favor 100%. But for tonight, you need to have a city manager dedicated to carry business out, because we did have an instance, just not too far back, where we had a problem, we didn't have city manager. So we don't want to be put in a position for a legal problem, just to wait because we like somebody or whatever. But let, we'll let this, let the staff talk amongst themselves and come back and you can go talk to them on this item if you so desire. No problem, but no two people together, and we'll, we'll formulate something. But tonight you need to decide, and I, I do support Mr. Brown, I would support any of those people out there in this audience. This is just a temporary, keep us out of trouble for one month or whatever until we decide. And that's what we have to do. If you have somebody else you want to nominate, then that's, the floor's yours. That's the whole process that we have to follow.
Right, because I remember the incident where we didn't have somebody and it wasn't, it wasn't pleasant.
Wasn't nice. And I, I will nominate our second Mr. Brown nomination, if nobody else wants to do it, to get the meeting closed, to where we close this issue. Angela, do you have somebody else in mind that you want to nominate? Because it's the.
No, I just, I just.
I understand where you want to go.
I have my idea.
I am, and that's.
I think that might work best.
If you understood the whole process of what this is, that's what we're here for. They're going to make their decision what they want to do.
Exactly.
That's fine. I agree with that. And Wes, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I've weighed in, and if you're looking for a motion.
A second to his nomination. Or motion, I mean.
If you want.
He made a motion to have Mia.
But we have to see.
I asked if he made a motion.
We have to see if she would accept it.
I think she still needs a, a motion.
Well, if, you have to second it for me to ask her if she accepts it.
I make a motion to nominate Mia as the interim city manager. Mia?
Thank you.
Go for it, yes. Our city clerk.
You have been motioned and seconded, and we haven't voted, but would you accept it?
I'm honored by the choice. I feel like I have to, I have to say that Todd Morley would probably be more suited to take on the interim city manager, and I would like to help him, and I'd like to help the rest of staff as much as I can. I think it's important to have.
We're having the discussion already, it looks like, before we.
Well, I just wanted to weigh in on my.
That's what you want?
Yeah.
Back to the.
Are you saying you declining?
I don't decline, I just want you to double think about. I, I think, I think you need to think, rethink that, because there.
I know how you feel.
Yeah.
It's a, it's.
And it's not a sly on any, anybody, but until the, the decision, and I know we have great people in, on our staff, and just give us some time and, and we're only talking about a month, I think.
I can handle that.
You agree to that?
I agree.
Okay. And now, staff, you, you can talk amongst yourselves and do what you need to do, but she will be interim city manager for you fellows. And we have to vote on it, so we'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hogue?
Four.
Councilmore, Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the recommended.
And Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay. I think that concludes our agenda. Anybody have anything they would like to say before we close? Meeting adjourned.